Welcome to America's Town Meeting from New York City. Tonight's subject, Flying Saucers: Fact or Illusion? Our speakers are Major Donald E. Keough, author of Flying Saucers from Outer Space, and Jonathan N. Leonard, science editor of Time Magazine and author of Flight into Space. For scores of generations civilized men have recorded astonishing descriptions of atmospheric phenomena and awesome things hovering in the skies above them. Mysterious floating objects, flashes and fireballs, and luminescent manifestations of every description are recounted in the annals of Western civilization as far back as Roman times. Speculation as to their origin was, of course, largely conditioned upon the degree of scientific knowledge at the disposal of the observer. Generally, however, they were isolated instances, unrelated, and devoid of organized study anywhere. Against this historic background, the controversy which has developed in the United States since nineteen forty-seven over the so-called flying saucer sightings are absolutely without precedent or parallel. An oppressive accumulation of approximately eight hundred unexplained reports has not only been accorded the widest possible publicity, intriguing the public everywhere and taxing the credibility of many, but has by now enlisted on a national scale the ingenuity of some of our top airmen, scientists, and military experts. Curiously enough, it is said that more than eighteen percent of these sightings were reported by trained military personnel, and some eleven percent were reported by Air Force pilots alone. Of all sightings recorded, somewhat less than fifteen percent are reported to be classified as unexplained. To delve into the mystery of these unexplained phenomenon, the resources of the United States and other nations have mustered at strategic points scores of special cameras, radar installations, and other detecting devices manned by trained personnel. Meantime, the controversy rages unabated between those who believe that the so-called flying saucers are fact and those who dismiss them as an illusion. Tonight, Town Hall is proud to present two distinguished exponents of each of these viewpoints. Our first guest is Major Donald E. Keough, author of Flying Saucers from Outer Space. Born in Iowa, Major Keough attended the United States Naval Academy and was commissioned with the rank of lieutenant in the U.S. Marine Corps. The following year, he finished a training course for naval aviators at Pensacola. From nineteen twenty-five to seven, he was chief of information of the aeronautics branch of the Department of Commerce and was assigned as manager of the U.S. tour of the Josephine Ford North Pole plane, which flew around the country with Floyd Bennett and Bert Blanchard. In nineteen forty-nine, Major Keough was assigned to investigate the flying saucer mystery for True Magazine. The Flying Saucers Are Real was his first book on this subject. It was followed by Flying Saucers from Outer Space, published in November of this year. Town Hall is proud to welcome Major Keough.
In nineteen forty-eight, like many other pilots, I scoffed at the saucer reports. Now, after a five-year investigation, I believe they are real. But there's only one way to decide this question fairly: by examining the official reports. Neither my opinion nor Mr. Leonard's has any value unless it is backed by the evidence. In the last five years, I've seen hundreds of Air Force reports covering worldwide sightings. The official records cleared for me have included the most baffling cases in intelligence files, cases used in the secret briefing of high government officials. These reports were made by Air Force, Navy, Marine Corps, and airline pilots, by expert radar men, guided missile trackers, and other trained observers. The official conclusions were released to me by air technical intelligence. Since Mr. Leonard cannot be expected to know these hundreds of reports, I shall refer mainly to official cases from my book, which he has reviewed. I repeat, these are Air Force intelligence reports certified by official documents in the book. They are not from anonymous sources, as Mr. Leonard mistakenly stated. These sightings were analyzed by intelligence officers or by scientists under secret contracts. In case after case, pilots and radar men insist that the objects maneuvered under intelligent control, often at fantastic speeds. In the last two months, reports have rapidly increased. As a result, new orders have been given to pilots, which I shall explain later. Other governments have also taken new steps. In Canada, a special observatory has been set up to track saucers and learn their means of propulsion. Mr. W.B. Smith, the official in charge, with a frankness unknown here, publicly admitted that saucers are probably from outer space. In our Air Force, only one intelligence officer, Colonel William C. Odell, has been allowed to make such a statement, and then, without use of his rank. But this conviction is privately shared by many in the Air Force. Certain airline pilots, after sighting strange machines, have publicly announced their belief that the saucers are observation devices from another planet, that an advanced race is making a long survey of the Earth, delaying contact until they understand every phase of our life and can gauge our probable reactions. On the basis of the evidence, I believe this is the answer, fantastic as it may seem.
Thank you, Major Keough. Our next guest is Jonathan Norton Leonard, science editor of Time Magazine. Mr. Leonard joined the weekly news magazine staff as foreign news writer in nineteen forty-three. He became Time's science editor in nineteen forty-five. Born in Somerville, Massachusetts, he attended public schools there and entered Harvard University in nineteen twenty-one. Originally with the New York Times, he became a freelance writer, and for the next ten years turned out innumerable books and articles, including The Enjoyment of Science, Crusaders of Chemistry, and his most recent book, Flight into Space: A Philosophical But Factual View of the Fact and Fancies of Spaceflight, which was published in October of this year. We are proud to welcome Mr. Jonathan N. Leonard to America's Town Meeting.
The question, "Do you believe in flying saucers?" has come to mean, "Do you believe that flying saucers are spaceships from a foreign planet?" I do not believe it, because I have seen no evidence for it. All I have seen is reports of strange sights in the sky. Most of them have been explained in unsensational ways, and most of the rest were so poorly reported that no conclusion is possible. But even if many unexplained saucers had been seen, they would not necessarily be spaceships. To call them spaceships is jumping to an extremely unlikely conclusion. It is explaining a small mystery by pinning it on a big mystery. The ancient Greeks could not explain lightning, so they gave up and called it a weapon of the god Zeus. This was no explanation at all. The flying saucer cultists are doing the same thing. To explain a few puzzling reports, they are dreaming up spaceships, and they give them a godlike ability to violate all known physical laws. The world is full of mysteries, and the way to solve them is to observe them and study them carefully. This is what the Air Force has been doing, and it says that it has no evidence that flying saucers are spaceships. People who say that the Air Force is lying about this and that it is deliberately concealing a threatened invasion from space are accusing it of something close to treason. I do not think that they are justified. Spaceships are not impossible theoretically. The human race can build them if it makes the effort, and there may be races in space that have already done so. At least, I cannot prove that there are not. But to say that flying saucers are spaceships, just because a few of the reports are hard to explain, is naive and primitive thinking. It is like explaining lightning by calling it the weapon of a god.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leonard. Major Keough, before we go into our exchange of views, and I know they're going to be sharp this evening, I was intrigued by a statement which you made in your opening presentation. And I'd like to ask you if you might not wish to elaborate on it. You said that during the last two months, reports on unidentified flying objects have rapidly increased, and then you said that, as a result of this, new orders have been given to pilots, and you would explain that later. I wonder if you care to explain that to us now?
Yes, I shall. The Air Force, through the MATS intelligence, that is Military Air Transport Intelligence, has sent word to all airline pilots. Instead of waiting after they sight an unidentified object in the air, waiting until they land to write up the report or be interrogated, they are immediately to get on the radio and give a running account of what they see. Now, this was confirmed to me by the Airline Pilots Association and also by Air Force Public Information. The same order has been relayed to all military pilots, and presumably to those in the Navy and the Marine Corps.
I see. Mr. Leonard, do you have any comment to make on that?
Why, I think it's a fine thing, sure. Why not? It's, uh, there's a lot of controversy on this thing, and the Air Force has been accused of concealing evidence. I think it's a very good thing to tell the pilots to report right off.
But, uh, this shows a great deal of concern, which the Air Force, at the same time, disavows. It says, "We're not concerned, there's nothing to it," and at the same time, they give these orders and tell everybody to get in the information as rapidly as possible.
I don't think they're concerned about spaceships. I think they're concerned about the publicity they're getting.
They're concerned about the objects.
Well, gentlemen, that brings us, I think, to the very first point which the average American would like to have clarified and discussed this evening. What are the observers seeing, in your opinion? Are they seeing something, or are they seeing nothing? Is it imagination, or is it factual that they are seeing something?
Want me to answer that?
Uh, please do.
Well, I think they're seeing something. I think that a good many of these people are perfect and sincere. There are some jokers and liars, some drunks, no doubt, but I think a good many of them see something. What they see is another question.
Do you have your opinion, Mr. Leonard, as to what they may be actually seeing?
I think they see a great variety of things. I think they, um, they see, uh, all reflections from the tail fins of aluminum airplanes. You can see them at a much greater distance than you can see an airplane. They see weather balloons, and, uh, I think in the case of the more mystifying reports, they see various kinds of optical effects. Now, they aren't optical illusions any more than a rainbow is. A rainbow is an effect, an optical effect. It's very real. It's so, we know how it works. And there are a great many other ways that, uh, lights can be apparently displaced and made to move. The common mirage of this water in the road is a very common example. Every auto owner knows. You see the sky apparently in the road, and that's true of a great many other optical effects.
Uh, Major Keough, do you subscribe to that theory?
No, I'm afraid I can't. Uh, that might be true in many cases of untrained observers, people who'd be honestly mistaken. But when you take hundreds of airline pilots, radar men, Weather Bureau observers, who are trained to recognize such things, and for year after year, they have been reporting these objects, many of which are confirmed by radar simultaneously, prove that the object was real and that was under intelligent control maneuvering. And many of the cases, of which I can only mention a few tonight, have so stated that the answer was unknown, and in the analysis, they stated that the object seemed to be under intelligent control.
Well, Mr. Leonard, I believe you stated at the outset that you felt that there were only a few puzzling reports. Now, Major, uh, I know that you disagree with that. Do you have any idea, however, as to how many reports are puzzling or are unsolved so far?
I don't think there are very many. I think there are many reports which are put down by the Air Force as unidentified. And they may be, and most cases are, unidentified because the evidence given is extremely sketchy. I heard of one example, for instance, of a man who called up very excitedly and said something like this. He said, "I saw something flying by. It looked like a bird, but it was flying a lot faster than any bird ought to fly. What was it?" Well, the Air Force put that down as unexplained and listed the thing as a UFO, I think Major Keough calls it, an unexplained flying object.
Uh, Major Keough, do you agree with that?
Well, I would like to give a report by, let us say, someone a little more trained. On October twenty-ninth, over Hempstead, Long Island, two jet pilots were on a mission, spotted a very bright white light, and they tried to close in. Then the machine, whatever it was, tightened up. They were unable to get inside its turn, and finally, after trying to match the machine's performance for several minutes, they gave up. Now, here's the statement that the senior pilot gave to intelligence. "Based on my experience in fighter tactics, it is my opinion that the object was controlled by something having visual contact with it. The power and acceleration were beyond the capability of any known U.S. aircraft." And below this, the wing intelligence officer added, "It is believed this report is based on reliable and verifiable observation." That's an official intelligence report.
How many reports such as that, uh, not to interrupt, Mr. Leonard, but how many reports of that type do you feel that there are on the books now, uh, Major?
At least four hundred. I have some of the key cases right here, which prove that the objects are real, that they are under control, and that many of the people who saw them are convinced that they were some kind of revolutionary machine.
Mr. Leonard, do you feel that any pattern in these reports that the major cited?
Yes, I think there's a pattern. Some of the effects are similar. But I'd like to say a little bit about these trained observers. The, uh, pilot, airline pilot, or fighter pilot is generally a very fine guy, some of my best friends are pilots. But he is very rarely a physicist. He's very rarely understands the effects of refraction. He, uh, I think if you question him, you'd find that they know very little about such things. And so when you say a trained observer, you mean that he's been trained to recognize certain definite things. And when he comes up against something which isn't in the book, he often misinterprets it very widely. And this, I think, is the case in, uh, that Major Keough has just cited.
But you do feel that he saw something, however, what he saw was not a, any kind of a space machine?
No, and I think he jumped to the conclusion that, uh, it was, uh, intelligently controlled. It was a very, very long jump.
Well, speaking of intelligently controlled incidents, I think almost everyone is aware of the so-called sightings at Washington several months back, and I wonder if you would care to discuss that as an example of either accidental or perhaps controlled performance? Major, would you like to begin the discussion of that?
Yes, I should. Uh, I investigated that for six weeks after the two weekend incidents. I talked with all of the radar men who were in the control center, with the radar engineer, with Dr. John Hagan, the chief radio astronomer of the Navy, with Von Rockne of the Weather Bureau, their radar expert, with the pilots who sighted these things in the air, with the radar men at other stations. Now, these things were triangulated from three radar stations. They were seen simultaneously in the air at exactly the point where the radar sets showed them. They showed the same maneuvers, the same speeds, which were reported visually by observers in the air and on the ground. And later on, I was told from Air Force Technical Intelligence Center that this principle applied. The same thing that they added in another similar case, the electronic or visual mirage of meteorological phenomena is out of the question, as the radar set was on high beam and both would not occur simultaneously in the same place. Now, this was ruled out completely, although at the Air Force Conference in July, it was suggested that temperature inversion was probably the answer. Later on, I asked the Air Force to designate an official spokesman who would give me what they considered the answer. We went into it, I presented all the evidence, and gave him the temperature inversion on that night, which was less than one and a half degrees. This spokesman then told me and allowed me to give it as the official Air Force viewpoint, that with such a low inversion, it was impossible for temperature inversion to have been the answer, and the case remained unexplained, and it still is.
Well, Mr. Leonard, how would you explain the Washington sighting?
Well, I, as science editor of Time, I got a report on that immediately. In fact, I got telephone reports from the inside of the radar station where the observations were being made, and one of our men was there, right on the spot. And I had very great doubts about this. It seemed to be a very curious, panicky situation going on among these boys. And so, one thing I did was to ask whether these objects had been seen on radars at a slight distance from Washington. I could find no radar that had seen them except in the immediate vicinity of Washington. Then I, um, also asked about, they called up jets, of course, to come down there and defend the White House and Congress and the Federal Reserve Bank and other such things from flying saucers. And the jets came over from Delaware, and they got there pretty soon, and they crisscrossed all around Washington, and they found no such things. So I decided there wasn't very much to it. And then when the Air Force later came out with an official statement on the subject that there wasn't anything much to it, of course, Major Keough says that they didn't, but actually, they did come out with a statement that this was caused by temperature inversions. I think they had a lot more information than can be gathered in the newspapers and by talking to individuals who, having seen something, are committed to stand by it. Now, before there's any more said about official statements, the Air Force, I'd like to read part of a letter. I thought that there would be remarks about the official attitude of the Air Force, so I called up the Air Force and asked them. This is a letter on the stationary of the Department of the Air Force, Washington, the Office of the Secretary. That's the Secretary of the Air Force, and it's as high as you can get. It's signed by Colonel Max B. Boyd, Chief of Information Division, Office of Public Information. General Smith, dear Mr. Leonard, General Smith has told me of your need for a statement from the Air Force concerning flying saucers. The Air Force position concerning the unexplained aerial phenomena has been restated recently in the enclosed fact sheet, which I hope will be useful to you. You may be interested also in another recent Air Force statement which said, "After reviewing its massive reports and presenting the better documented ones to highly competent scientific advisors, the Air Force has found that there is absolutely no proof in these reports that space travel from another planet is going on. Either of these statements may be attributed to the Air Force or to an Air Force spokesman." Now, this is, uh, if I will read on occasion some of the things from that fact sheet. One of them is about the same sort of thing. It says that, um, "No authentic physical evidence has been received establishing the existence of spaceships from other planets."
Well, Mr. Leonard, if I may interrupt, uh, is there any evidence or any statement by the Air Force which would deny, for example, that these sightings are sightings of solid objects controlled by intelligent procedure?
Well, if you, uh, if you ruled out that they were, the Air Force also rules out that they are their own guided missiles, and they rule out that they are also not guided missiles from, uh, foreign countries. And if you rule those things out, and they still say that they're not planetary, why they must be something that can be explained in some much simpler way?
Well, gentlemen, do you feel that there is anything being withheld by the Air Force or the Pentagon, films, or photographs, or secret analyses perhaps, which the public has the right to know? Major Keough?
Well, in one specific case, uh, the analysis of a motion picture, known as the Utah Pictures, has been withheld from the public. These pictures were taken in July of fifty-two. They were analyzed for a period of four to six months by the Air Force and the Navy, and they were also analyzed by civilian experts who were brought in for that purpose. At that time, it was decided that the objects could not be explained as any conventional objects of any kind. They were not aircraft, they were not balloons, they were not reflections from birds' wings. It was decided then by a group that believed that this should be made public, that there would be a showing of this film to the press in Washington, and a public statement would be made. A controversy arose over that, which lasted for about two months, at which time the planned showing was killed. I was given a copy of the press release, which was to be given out at that time, and it stated emphatically that these were the answers, that they did not have any explanation for them, the Air Force therefore would not speculate on what they were. But it showed that they were maneuvering at high speeds, and that they had been within a five mile distance, they could easily have been identified as aircraft or balloons. Later on, about six weeks ago, I inquired the Air Force if they had any new answer, and I was told by the Air Force press desk, by an official on the desk, that there was now a suggestion that they might have been migratory birds, in spite of the fact that in this analysis, which has not been released to the public, it says they could not be reflections from birds because their light source was too intense and no light, no bird's wing could be that reflective. I have that statement here tonight and be glad to show it to Mr. Leonard or anyone else.
Statements seem to be a little bit confused. Now, here's the latest from the Air Force. "There have been some misconceptions concerning Air Force handling of flying saucer reports. One of these misconceptions is that the Air Force is either withholding flying saucer information from the public or cloaking it beneath a security classification. This is untrue." And they also say that they, um, they have, uh, been very, let's see, they, uh, "However, only a very few movie-type films have been received by the Air Force, and they reveal only pinpoints of light moving across the sky. The Air Force has been unable to identify the source of these lights. The images are too small to analyze properly. They don't know what they are." And I think that's, a great many cases, we don't know. But the thing that I object to is the vast jump from lack of knowledge to a dogmatic statement that these things are spaceships.
Well, Mr. Leonard, before I go into that, I would like to read one thing here to show that someone is not stating the truth, and I would like to have it brought out. "I have invited the Air Force to put me back on active duty and have me court-martialed for falsifying the Air Force documents. If they can prove that anything I said about official sightings or the Utah Pictures is false, and I'll repeat that here and now. I have it, I have documents here which prove it. I have proof from the former head of Project Blue Book, who cleared all of these documents for me at Wright Field. I have a statement here by the official who gave them to me at the Pentagon, who was assigned to do that. I can prove that every case in that book, that I say is from the Air Force, is an official sighting case, that the pictures were taken, they were analyzed, and they have not, the analysis has not been released."
And still they deny that they have ever had any evidence whatsoever that these things are from space.
That's right.
That's about two weeks ago.
That's right. But here is what they told me repeatedly. "We have no concrete evidence." Now, Mr. Finletter, the former Secretary of the Air Force, said, when he was briefed by intelligence officers in nineteen fifty-two, after a series of sightings, he said, "There is no evidence yet, no concrete evidence, to prove or disprove the existence of flying saucers. However, since we cannot explain a number of the sightings, the Air Force will continue its investigation."
He said nothing about spaceships.
No, but in many of these sightings, which I can't read here, but some of them are in the book, and any that you wish to know, I'll be glad to show to you.
They're from very, very junior officers.
The speeds have been computed and confirmed by radar and intelligence certified, that the speeds were measured at speeds of thousands of miles an hour, that the objects were solid.
They don't certify any such thing, Major.
I beg your pardon?
No, they don't. These things have been analyzed by higher sources, higher groups in the Air Force, and their conclusion is just what I read to you.
Well, gentlemen, uh, we'll return to that in just a moment.
They've seen everywhere, from the North Pole up to Greenland, Alaska, and in every country that we know of except behind the Iron Curtain, and there have been very few cases, but a few from that area. In this country, they have been seen most frequently around Air Force bases and occasionally atomic installations. Now, that may be because there is more observation there, but it still remains the fact that they have been seen there more frequently, and that is where the Air Force has placed these seventy-five new grid cameras, which they have distributed around the country and foreign bases abroad, to get pictures of these objects and try to resolve the light source.
Which up to date, those cameras have seen nothing.
Uh, Mr. Leonard, what is your answer to the question?
My answer is that, uh, the saucers are most frequently seen in places where people have read the most about flying saucers.
They've also been seen in places where they have had no flying saucer reports at all. They've been seen in Africa, Far East, the Near East, by Chinese who can't even read their own language. They've been seen all over the world, in places where there's absolutely been no communication about flying saucer books, articles, or news sightings.
They were seen in ancient times, but they call them dragons and witches.
If the Air Force were convinced that what they're telling the public is true, why are they spending money, and a lot of money, to investigate this? Why have they scrambled jets at least four hundred times in the past four years to chase unidentified objects? There is a standing order that any time the existence of a UFO is established on a radar scope, that jets must be ordered alone to try to intercept it.
Well, I think that's a very reasonable thing to do.
Sure, but if they didn't exist, why don't they write it off? If the Air Force really believes what they're saying, why are they going to all this trouble?
Well, gentlemen, is there anything, if I may interrupt, is there anything which has occurred lately, or any recent steps taken by the Air Force to show that they are now more concerned perhaps before, or than they officially admitted about unidentified flying objects? Anything specific?
I think not, and I think this letter I read to you is dated December fifteenth and is from the Secretary of the Air Force.
Well, we will continue with our discussion in just a moment. Gentlemen, now we have come to the most intriguing portion of America's Town Meeting, where we entertain questions from the audience directed to both of you. I would like to recognize at the outset, the gentleman on my left. For whom is your question intended?
I would like to address my question to Major Keough. Major Keough, I would like to review a question. How possible is it for the flying saucer or the thing seen to be pilotless and to be controlled from the ground by the U.S. or some foreign power?
Well, if such a device existed which had those speeds and capabilities, it could be guided by remote control, just as we guide our drones or pilotless bombers.
Uh, the next question, please.
This is Mr. Leonard.
Would you tell us who you are, please, and where you're from?
My name is Paul Matthews. Uh, Mr. Leonard, uh, don't you think that the Air Force may not wish to create... Uh, Mr. Leonard, uh, don't you think that the Air Force may not wish to create panic, and, uh, that is why they're withholding the information that they may have, and also that, uh, they may have discovered that these visitors are not, after all, hostile or out to attack us anyway?
Well, the, that's really two questions. I think the first one about they're not wanting to create panic, I think if they're proceeding in that way, they're being very, very remiss in their duty. They're supposed, the Air Force is supposed to protect us and not to allow us to live in a fool's paradise. And I think that if anyone in the Air Force tried to do that, the higher levels of the government, the President, the Secretary of Defense would immediately stop them because it would be the worst way to get us in trouble. And this question of having made contacts with them and decide they're not hostile, I think in that case, I think they'd be delighted to tell us all about it.
May I have the next question, please? The lady on my right.
My question is addressed to Major Kehoe.
Uh, would you tell us who you are, please?
My name is Eunice Ford, and I'm from Detroit. But my question is, is there a possibility, Major Kehoe, that another planet might be trying to contact the Earth?
Well, I think that is the answer. Of course, no, there's no way of knowing which one it might be. It's possible it might be within our own solar system. Perhaps the Mars Committee, which has now been established to watch Mars as it nears the Earth, may find some evidence during the coming year.